Good evening. This is a special meeting in the Northampton City Council. Today's November 8, 2021, and this is a special meeting to approve updated language for 21.352 in order to define wards and precincts in the city of Northampton. This meeting is being audio and video recorded, so anyone that's with us on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. Laura, will you please take the role?
Sure.
Councillor Dwight.
Here.
Councillor Foster. Councillor Jarrett.
Here.
Councillor La Barge.
Here.
Councillor Mayori.
Here.
Councillor Nash.
Here.
Councillor Quinlan.
Here.
Councillor Shara.
Here.
And Councillor Thorpe.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so as I said, this is the only item is 21.352 in order to define wards and precincts in the city of Northampton. There, we are going to take two, there's a process note asking if that we take two readings this evening. And Pam.
Move approval on this first one, actually.
Please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Dwight, seconded by, was that Councillor Mayori? Yes, no?
It was me.
Oh, sorry.
That's good. I'm throwing my voice tonight.
Um, and Pam, welcome. Do you want to tell us what brought us here this evening?
Sure, thank you. So we have submitted the package for our new ward and precinct lines to the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office. They have accepted all of the documents that we presented. But in addition to what we provided to them in terms of the description of the precincts, they had also asked us to pull together a description of the wards. So essentially, what I'm asking you to approve tonight is all of the boundaries and territories that we had defined before by, for example, 1A and 1B, and the language now excludes the center line of each ward and precinct that we had described in the text. So they are sending forward the precincts that we sent them. They're sending forward the block, all of the blocks that we defined per ward and precinct. They're pretty happy with the descriptions that we had, and they're just asking that we go back and have the city council approve what the actual boundaries of the ward are. So James and I worked on that late last week, and I think we're pretty much ready with the language that I provided here. I did note that Laura had indicated a different document number. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so on the document that I circulated this afternoon, I had called it 21.346 Part B, but Laura, if I could ask you to make that amendment to the document to reflect the number that you had given this, this particular document, that'd be great.
Sure.
So I'm not sure how you'd like to proceed. James is here to put the map up. There's only six pages this time, so it's a little shorter than what we had the last time. But essentially, all of the outer boundaries of the ward remain unchanged. So I didn't know if you wanted to read through it and have ask James to follow along with the map, or how you wanted to proceed.
So just to be clear, none of the boundaries have changed. It's just, the entire ward is now described as opposed to the two separate precincts.
That's correct. What, it might sound a little different because when we first put the, put the precincts together, we weren't paying particular attention to whether we were going clockwise or counterclockwise when we started the description. And so, if it sounds a little bit different, that's probably one of the reasons why when we bound them together, it, it wasn't as easy to just subtract out the center line by using the words that we had put together. We found that out relatively quickly, so, yeah.
I'd be impressed if someone could, could identify that difference as we're going and remember how it sounded differently. So how about, why don't, I don't, I don't feel like it's necessary to read this through again. Councillors, raise your hand if you disagree. Um, do we want to, maybe we could just put the document up and we'll kind of scroll through and just point out the spots where they've now been joined?
I don't know that that's possible again because, because within the various precincts, we didn't start at the same location, therefore the precinct didn't end at the, at, you know, the same location, so we didn't make this easy on ourselves.
There's no like track changes we can just see, right?
No.
Okay, Councillor Foster, please save us.
Okay, well, at the risk of being that councillor, I know it's six pages, but I wonder if we should read it and look at the map only because that would give us an opportunity to catch. Pam and James, I know you work so hard on this, but if there's a mistake or something that isn't quite making sense or something, perhaps if we're reading out loud with all of these eyes on it, that would give us a chance to catch it. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
I'm happy to do whatever you want.
You, you can get your voodoo doll of Councillor Foster out later.
That seems like a very responsible request, but everyone remember this came from Councillor Foster. But Councillor Quinlan.
If we do that, I'd be honored to read Ward 1, since I didn't get to last.
You betcha. Okay, um, can we, does everyone have the document since it wasn't attached to the agenda? I'm seeing.
Was it mailed to us?
Email.
Okay.
Hang on a sec.
It's just always challenging to read it off the screen, so we'll make sure that everyone can pull it up. Do we have a time for when this email came in?
4:42, I think I got it.
Okay.
And I did send it to the councillors.
No, and I did, I did that.
Okay.
Oh, got it. Okay. 4:46 is when it came into mine. That helps anybody.
Do though.
Okay.
All right. I've got mine.
Okay, how about, so Councillor Dwight, since you're at large, do you want to read the preamble part? And then we'll pass it off to the ward councillors.
All right, this is, this is my pleasure, Michael Quinlan. I want, I want to know that I'm just to go on record.
I don't have it.
I don't have it.
You don't have the doc, the email?
No.
I can't pull it up, just.
Okay. Um, wait, hi, James?
Like the map.
What's that?
Would you like the map?
Yeah, would people like the map so we can follow along the hand?
Hell yeah.
Okay, here, okay, James, you should be able to share the map. Did you see Councillor Mayori just put it in the chat?
Okay.
Can you access it from there? The, the doc? Councillor Thorpe and Councillor La Barge. Do you see that in the chat? All right, I'm gonna forward it to you right now, Councillor La Barge and Councillor Thorpe. Anyone else need it?
I'm coming up when I hit the link.
Okay.
Okay, I got the map.
Okay. All right. I'm, I just, I just forwarded it to those two councillors, so look for it in your email. And Councillor Dwight, take it away.
Yes, ma'am. In the city council, October 21st, 2021, from the recommendation of City Clerk Pamela L. Powers and City GIS Coordinator James Thompson. This is in order to define the wards and precincts in the city of Northampton. Whereas, Northampton City Charter, Article 8, Elections, Section 8-6, Wards, calls for the city clerk to establish seven wards to consist of nearly an equal number of inhabitants. And whereas, Northampton City Charter further requires the city council to review these wards every 10 years. And whereas, Northampton is required by law to redraw ward and precinct lines after the 2020 federal census concluding, concluded that existing precincts no longer meets the legal standard for equal number of residents per ward and precinct. Now therefore be it ordered that the city is hereby divided into seven wards bounded as far as possible by the center line of known streets or ways or other defined limits described as follows.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Again, Councillor Foster has requested this. Um, Councillor Quinlan.
A, Ward 1. All of that portion of Hampshire County bounded and described as follows. Beginning at the point of intersection of Broadbrook and the base of the Fitzgerald Lake Dam spillway, and proceeding northerly along Broadbrook to the Hatfield Northampton Town-City Line, and proceeding easterly along the Hatfield Northampton Town-City Line to the Hadley Northampton Town-City Line, and proceeding westerly along the Hadley Northampton Town-City Line to the Norwattick Rail Trail, and proceeding southwesterly along the Norwattick Rail Trail to Beige Street, and proceeding northerly along Beige Street to the intersection of Beige Street, Bradford Street, and Industrial Drive, and proceeding northwesterly along Industrial Drive approximately 1,200 feet to the Northampton Storage Solutions Private Road, and proceeding southwesterly along the Northampton Storage Solutions Private Road to the Boston and Main Railroad right-of-way, and proceeding northerly along the Boston and Main Railroad right-of-way to Damon Road, and proceeding westerly along Damon Road to King Street, and proceeding southerly along King Street to Finn Street, and proceeding westerly along Finn Street to Prospect Street, and proceeding westerly on Prospect Street to Franklin Street, and proceeding southerly along Franklin Street to Elm Street, and proceeding westerly along Elm Street to North Elm Street, and proceeding northwesterly along North Elm Street to its intersection with Locust Street Route 9, and continuing westerly along Locust Street Route 9 to Hatfield Street, and proceeding northerly along Hatfield Street to North Elm Street, and proceeding northwesterly along North Elm Street to Bridge Road, and proceeding westerly along Bridge Road approximately 335 feet to the driveway parking lot entrance at 572 Bridge Road, and proceeding northeasternly approximately 350 feet along the driveway parking lot to Old Quarry Road, and proceeding northerly along Old Quarry Road to its terminus, and proceeding northerly approximately 4,900 feet from the Old Quarry Road terminus to the point of the beginning.
Excellent, thank you. Councillor Foster.
I don't have it.
You don't have a councillor card?
I don't have that.
You, did you look in the, I just, I forwarded you the email.
I did. Nothing's come through.
Hmm, all right, well, we got, we got a few words till we get to you, so.
Okay.
Let's keep looking. Councillor Foster, are you sent?
Yeah. All right, Ward 2. All of that portion of Hampshire County bounded and described as follows. Beginning at the point of intersection with the Hampshire County Jail and House of Corrections driveway and Rocky Hill Road, and proceeding northerly along the driveway of the Hampshire County Jail and House of Corrections. and proceeding northerly along the driveway of the Hampshire County Jail and House of Corrections to its intersection with the Department of Food and Agriculture private road and proceeding northerly along the Department of Food and Agriculture private road to its intersection with Burt's Pit Road and continuing northeasterly along the Department of Food and Agriculture Farm Road to the Mill River and proceeding northerly approximately one thousand seven hundred feet along the Mill River to Broughton's Brook and proceeding northerly along Broughton's Brook to Federal Street and proceeding easterly along Federal Street to Vernon Street and proceeding northerly along Vernon Street to its intersection with Elm Street and proceeding easterly on Elm Street to its intersection with Franklin Street and proceeding northerly on Franklin Street to its intersection with Prospect Street and proceeding on Prospect Street to its intersection with Finn Street and continuing on Prospect Street to its intersection with Tyler Court and continuing on Prospect Street to its intersection with Elm Street and proceeding easterly on Elm Street to its intersection with West Street Route Sixty-Six and proceeding southerly along West Street Route Sixty-Six to its intersection with Belmont Avenue and proceeding southerly approximately seventy feet to Veterans Field Parking Lot Road and proceeding easterly along the Veterans Field Parking Lot Road to the Manhan Rail Trail and proceeding westerly along the Manhan Rail Trail to the Mill River Dyke and proceeding northwesterly along the Mill River Dyke to West Street Route Sixty-Six and proceeding westerly along West Street Route Sixty-Six to Earl Street and proceeding southerly along Earl Street to Manhan Rail Trail and proceeding westerly approximately one thousand two hundred seventy feet along the Manhan Rail Trail to a Brook and proceeding northwest approximately eight hundred feet along the thread of the Brook to Grove Street and continuing southeasterly approximately three hundred and eighty feet to the terminus of Meadowland Condo Access Road and proceeding westerly along the Meadowland Condo Access Road to Rocky Hill Road Route Sixty-Six and proceeding westerly along Rocky Hill Road Route Sixty-Six to the point of beginning.
Thank you. Counselor Nash?
Okay, doke, let's see. Okay, C, Ward Three. All of that portion of Hampshire County bounded and described as follows. Beginning at the point of the intersection of the Norwattic Rail Trail, the Hadley slash Northampton Town-City Line and proceeding southerly along the Hadley Northampton Town-City Line to the East Hampton, Northampton Town-City Line and proceeding westerly along the East Hampton, Northampton Town-City Line to Mount Tom Road, Route Five, and proceeding northerly along Mount Tom Road, Route Five to Pleasant Street and proceeding northerly along Pleasant Street to Dyke Road and proceeding westerly along Dyke Road to Lyman Road and proceeding northwesterly along Lyman Road to South Street Route Ten and proceeding northerly along South Street Route Ten to Old South Street and proceeding northeasterly along Old South Street to its intersection with Con Street and continuing northerly along Old South Street to the Manhan Rail Trail and proceeding easterly along the Manhan Rail Trail to Pleasant Street and proceeding northwesterly along Pleasant Street Route Five to the intersection of Main Street, King Street and Pleasant Street and continuing northerly along King Street to Damon Road and proceeding easterly along Damon Road to the Boston and Main Railroad right-of-way and proceeding southerly along the Boston and Main Railroad right-of-way to its intersection with the Northampton Storage Solutions Private Road and proceeding northeasterly along the Northampton Storage Solutions Private Road to its intersection with Indus, Industrial Drive and proceeding southeasterly approximately twelve hundred, um, it doesn't say feet, along Industrial Drive to its intersection with Bates Street, Bradford Street and Industrial Drive and continuing southeasterly along Bates Street to its intersection with the Norwattic Rail Trail and continuing northeasterly along the Norwattic Rail Trail to the point of beginning.
Thank you. And Laura, did you get that Scrivener's? To add feet?
After twelve hundred.
After twelve hundred?
Uh, I probably can't see my hands, but I had.
Oh, I can't see your hand. I can't see your hand. Hold on. Uh, go ahead. There you go.
Um, I note the use of a, a Boston and Main Railroad and I, I know that that's now owned by, you know, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that was intended.
Damon. Hammered, James.
Uh, well, this was a descriptor that we put on it. Um, I believe that the descriptor came from the maps that James had. James, do you know if these are current names?
Good question. I mean, this is from Mass GIS, the Active Service Railroad Line. It's the Connecticut River Main Line branch of the New York, New Haven, N- New York, New Haven and Hartford. Um, quite honestly, I do not know. All I can say is that this came from Mass GIS as their railroads in active service.
And this was, wasn't, it wasn't flagged by the folks, uh, the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office. So whatever map that James used is apparently the map that they must be similar to the map that they're following.
I will note that it's interesting, this section down here that I'm clicking on says B and M. This section up here says New York, New Haven and Hartford. So I, I would just say offhand, could certainly ask, um, but maybe historically it's known as the Boston and Maine.
Right.
It's on the railroad bridge.
Uh, well, there's a little story about why it's on that railroad bridge. And that's because of the movie, um, that was filmed here.
I remember.
Yeah.
The Boston Railroad never ran through here. It was, they put that up for, uh, I forgot what horrible movie it was for, but yeah.
Malice, I think. So would, would using the term Connecticut River Main Line then encompass, uh, the, the, the current term?
Again, I could say that this portion up here north of Bradford Street seems to be calling it New York, New Haven, Hartford, section south of it says Boston and Maine. Let's see if there's any other names along the way.
I mean, we, we could certainly, we could certainly try to amend the language for this particular document. My only concern is that it would draw the attention to the fact that it doesn't match our precincts.
Yeah, I, I'm not, uh, if, if you all are comfortable with it, then I'm fine with it going forward. If it was historically known that way, then, um, and it's pretty clear, it's the, the only railroad that, that is passing through. So, um, seems like it wouldn't be an issue.
Um, Counsel, Counselor Thorpe, were you able to get that document?
I am looking at, I'm just playing around with the sizing.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Whenever you're ready.
You know what I'm thinking? You know what I'm thinking, Council President, Sharon?
I don't know what you're talking about. Please proceed.
Okay, all of that portion of Hampshire County bounded and described as follows. Beginning at the point of the Manhan Rail Trail and the Veterans Field Parking Lot Access Road proceeding southwesterly along the Manhan Rail Trail to the Mill River Dyke and proceeding northwesterly along Mill River Dyke to West Street Route Sixty-Six and proceeding westerly along West Street Route Sixty-Six to Earl Street and proceeding southerly along Earl Street to the Manhan Rail Trail and proceeding approximately one thousand two hundred and seventy feet westerly on the Manhan, Manhan Rail Trail to a Brook and proceeding approximately eight hundred feet northwest along the thread of the Brook to Grove Street and continually southeasterly approximately three hundred and eighty feet to the terminus of Meadowland Condominium Access Road and proceeding westerly along the Meadowland Condominium Access Road to Rocky Hill Road Route Sixty-Six and proceeding westerly along Route Rocky Hill Road, Route Sixty-Six to the Hampshire County Jail and House of Corrections driveway and proceeding northerly along the Hampshire County Jail and House of Corrections driveway to its intersection with the Department of Food and Agriculture private road and proceeding northerly along the Department of Food and Agriculture private road to its intersection with Burt's Pit Road and proceeding westerly along Burt's Pit Road to Florence Road and proceeding southerly along Florence Road to the East Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line and proceeding easterly along the East Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line to Mount Tom Road Route Five and proceeding northerly along Mount Tom Road Route Five to Dyke Road and proceeding westerly along Dyke Road to Lyman Road and proceeding westerly along Lyman Road to South Street Route Ten and proceeding northerly along South Street Route Ten to the intersection of South Street, Old South Street and School Street and proceeding easterly along Old South Street to Con Street and continuing on Old South Street to its intersection with the Manhan Rail Trail and proceeding easterly along the Manhan Rail Trail to Pleasant Street and proceeding northwesterly along Pleasant Street to its intersection with King and Main Street and continually, continuing northerly on King Street to Finn Street and proceeding westerly on Finn Street to its intersection with Prospect Street and proceeding southerly on Prospect Street to its intersection with Tyler Court and continuing southerly on Prospect Street to its intersection with Elm Street and proceeding easterly on Elm Street to its intersection with West Street Route Sixty-Six and proceeding westerly on West Street Route Sixty-Six to a intersection with Belmont Avenue and proceeding approximately seventy feet southerly to the point of beginning.
Thank you. That was a particularly long one. I'm sorry. Thank you. Counselor Jarrett?
Thank you. E, Ward Five. All of that portion of Hampshire County bounded and described as follows. Beginning at the point of intersection of Pine Street and Florence Road and proceeding easterly along Pine Street to Park Street, northerly along Park Street to Meadow Street, easterly along Meadow Street to North Main Street, westerly on North Main Street to Bardwell Street, easterly along Bardwell Street to North Maple Street, northerly along North Maple Street to Sheffield Lane, easterly along Sheffield Lane to Hillcrest Drive, northerly along Hillcrest Drive to Bridge Road, easterly along Bridge Road to North Elm Street, southerly along North Elm Street to Hatfield Street, westerly along Hatfield Street to Locust Street, easterly on Locust Street to its intersection with North Elm Street, continuing along North Elm Street to Elm Street, continuing on Elm Street to Vernon Street, southerly along Vernon Street to Federal Street, westerly along Federal Street to Broughton's Brook, southerly along Broughton's Brook to the Mill River, southwesterly approximately seventeen hundred feet along the Mill River to the Department of Food and Agriculture Farm Road southwesterly along the Department of Food and Agriculture Farm Road to Burt's Pit Road, westerly along Burt's Pit Road to Florence Road and then northerly along Florence Road to the point of beginning.
Thank you. Counselor LeBarge, were, were you able to get that document or no?
No.
Would you like me, um, if we put it on the screen, then we have to take the map off. So would you, would you like me to read it?
If you want to, that's.
Is that okay? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Um, okay. So this is L, Ward Six. All of that portion of Hampshire County bounded and described as follows. Beginning at the point of intersection of Turkey Hill Road and the West Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line and proceeding easterly along Turkey Hill Road to Parsons Brook and proceeding easterly along Parsons Brook to Sylvester Road and southerly along Sylvester Road to Ryan Road, proceeding easterly along Ryan Road to Parsons Brook and proceeding northerly along Parsons Brook to the Power Line right-of-way, proceeding easterly along Power Line right-of-way to Florence Stream, proceeding easterly along Florence Stream to Florence Pond Shoreline, proceeding easterly along Florence Pond Shoreline to the Florence Stream, easterly along Florence Stream to Florence Road and easterly along Florence Road to its intersection with Burt's Pit Road and continuing southerly along Florence Road to the East Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line and proceeding westerly along the East Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line to the West Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line and proceeding northerly along the West Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line to the point of the beginning. Okay, Counselor, you're very.
I think there's a Scrivener's error. Um, instead of L, it should be F for Ward Six.
Where do you see that?
E, F, yes. Um, well, it's in the document, so you can't, um, yes, for some reason we go from D, E to L and then N. So, so Ward Six should be F and then Seven should be G. Okay, Counselor Mayori?
Yes, I am here. Uh, if I, if, if it's too laggy, then I will deem Counselor Dwight to, to read the rest, but I'll give it a whirl. So Ward Seven, G, I mean, we'll amend it to G. Ward Seven. All of that portion of Hampshire County bounded and described as follows. Beginning at the point of intersection of the Williamsburg Northampton Town-City Line and the West Hampton North Hampton Town-City Line and proceeding easterly along the Williamsburg Northampton Town-City Line to the Hatfield Northampton Town-City Line and proceeding easterly along the Hatfield Northampton Town-City Line to Broadbrook and proceeding southerly along Broadbrook to the base of the Fitzgerald Lake Dam spillway and proceeding southerly approximately four thousand nine hundred feet to the terminus of Old Quarry Road and proceeding southerly along Old Quarry Road to the driveway parking lot of five hundred and seventy-two Bridge Road and proceeding approximately three hundred and fifty feet southwesterly along the driveway parking lot to Bridge Road and proceeding westerly along Bridge Road to Hillcrest Drive and proceeding southerly along Hillcrest Drive to Sheffield Lane and proceeding westerly along Sheffield Lane to North Maple Street and proceeding southerly along North Maple Street to Bardwell Street and proceeding westerly along Bardwell Street to North Main Street and proceeding easterly along North Main Street to Meadow Street and proceeding westerly on Meadow Street to Park Street and proceeding westerly along Park Street to Pine Street and proceeding westerly along Pine Street to the Mill River and continuing along Pine Street to its intersection with Spring Street, Pine Street and Florence Pond Road and proceeding southerly along Florence Road to Florence Stream and proceeding westerly along the Florence Stream to the Florence Pond Shoreline and proceeding westerly along the Florence Pond Shoreline to Florence Stream and proceeding westerly along the Florence Stream to the Power Line right-of-way and proceeding westerly along the Power Line right-of-way to Parsons Brook and proceeding southerly along Parsons Brook to Ryan Road and proceeding westerly along Ryan Road to Sylvester Road and proceeding northerly along Sylvester Road to Parsons Brook and proceeding westerly along Parsons Brook to Turkey Hill Road and proceeding westerly along Turkey Hill Road to the West Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line and proceeding northerly along the West Hampton, North Hampton Town-City Line to the point of beginning.
Excellent. Thank you. And just to close it out, it, it ends with further order that each ward shall consist of two precincts per ward as described in City Council and City Council, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one. Ward one shall consist of Ward Precincts One A, One B, Ward Two, Two H, Two B, Ward Three, Three A, Three B, Ward Four, Four A, Four B, Ward Five, Five A, Five B, Ward Six, Six A, Six B, and Ward Seven shall consist of Ward Precincts Seven A and Seven B. Alrighty, we have done it.
Done it. Thank you.
Um, any discussion? Thank you, James, for, for gliding us through Northampton again. I can't, okay, there, oh, oh, there are hands. Okay, Counsel, Laura, do you have a quick something and then I'll go to Counselor Quinlin?
Is the extra in city council in that, uh, end part a Scrivener's error? It's redundant. Yes?
I feel like it's often that way, no?
It's in the very last paragraph.
Right.
Should we take that out, the extra in city council, or did you want that to remain?
No, I, that probably should come out. I feel like it often, I'm often reading something that sounds redundant, but that sounds extra redundant. So as long as you think it is, Pam, then we can take out one of those.
It is, yeah.
Okay. Um, Counselor Quinlin, you had your hand up?
I did. I just, I just wanted to comment that I've had, um, since, uh, we voted on this last, uh, I've had some interactions with some residents that were, uh, just, you know, a little disappointed that they were moving wards. Uh, I'm sure that, that maybe some of you have heard from other people as well. Uh, you know, the explanation that this happens every ten years and, uh, you know, this is part of the census and part of the duty of the city. Uh, you know, kind of didn't, didn't alleviate the people's disappointment that they were being moved from a ward that they identify with. So I just wanted to just. So I just wanted to just say that out loud, just so that they would know that I heard them at least and, and while we can't change it, it's, um, it's important that people understand that the city does have a duty here, uh, and so I just, just wanted to get that out.
Thank you, thank you for acknowledging that. Um. Counselors, any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, roll call please. Laura, on a first reading.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinnland?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Second.
Was made by Counselor Labarge, seconded by Counselor Dwight on suspending rules. Any discussion? Roll call, wait, hold on, let me make sure I can see all of you. Okay, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinnland?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight?
Yes. Move second reading, please.
Second.
Was made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Nash. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinnland?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Okay, that.
We, we did second reading without reading.
Did you want to read it again?
No, too late now.
I thought we could go in reverse order.
Sounds like a.
Excellent idea.
Foster added again.
I'm coming for you, Counselor Foster and Counselor Dwight. Coming for you.
Make sure you give us cupcakes.
Okay, wow, cupcakes now, okay. Um, that was our only item. Move to adjourn.
Move, yeah, second that.
Counselor, motion was made by Counselor Foster and seconded by Counselor Dwight to adjourn. Roll call please, Laura.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinnland?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
And Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, James and Pam.
Thank you.
Record.